I'd like to call the order of the April 13th special meeting of the Brooklyn Local Board of Education to order. Roll call please, Mr. Gonda.
Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Neiman?
Here.
Ms. Horevath?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you all join me in pledging allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one my nation, under God, and of his whole with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda tonight, please?
Amen.
Mrs. Grace? Second, my Mrs. Horevath. Roll call, please. It's your Mrs. Grace.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Ms. Horevath?
Yes.
All right, next thing on the agenda tonight is treasures, reports, and contracts. Mr. Gonda?
Yes, under item meeting number one, contracts by best one virtual contract as listed.
Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Mr. Seaver? Second.
Okay.
Mrs. Grace? Any discussion or...? Mr. Gonda?
Yeah, we have three contracts on here. One is White State University Development Center for Graduation. Uh, this uh... What's that?
That's at law, do it.
Yes, law, do it.
Have a graduation.
Absolutely. The second one's with Hamilton Township Fire and Rescue. They're gonna be some fire training on property, uh, just to the left of the high school you're looking at. Building area to use for fire training. And then the last one is plain commercial services, and that is for moving services for moving some of the residential buildings.
Any discussion or questions?
Can I ask you something?
Absolutely.
For people that are new in the audience, the... Sometimes it sounds like we go, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." We get this ahead of time, and if we have questions, we'll call Mr. Lucky Space down there.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Sorry, Greg. Anyway, I just want everybody to know that we do go over this and we do ask questions. Sometimes it seems like we're just sitting here going, "Yes, yes, yes," but I just want you to know that.
No problem.
Also want to say thank you for... to the Nutter Center for being able to host graduation and have an in-person graduation. I know everybody worked really hard last year to do the MOGO graduation, and it was great, but maybe not as a long-term solution. So I'm certainly thankful to the Nutter Center for being able to work within whatever guidelines they're given to allow us to have an in-person graduation. So... If there are any other discussion?
One quick one.
Sure.
Terry, I just wanted to clarify that plain commercial... That contract is the result of several bids competition.
Yes.
This was...
Absolutely. Yes, this will be the role that's there.
That's correct.
That's what I clarified. Yes, we already have this third economic, commercial, long part of the agreement. Roll call, please. Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neiman?
Yes.
Ms. Horevath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all I have. Next thing on the agenda tonight is superintendents, reports, and recommendations. So, Mr. Power, would you go?
Thank you. Before I begin to make my recommendations, in front of item one, we have Dan Dallo from Scanska, our architect, Christie Boron here this evening to give the board an update and some overview of some of the projects that we want to look at using some of our contingency dollars for, that we've stayed with as our result of the bids and being efficient during the construction process. Dan, would you like to give the board an update?
So somebody we saw, I don't know, six weeks ago or so, so lots happened since then. We'll just do a quick update on just kind of where construction is before we jump into the dollars. So real quick, just on things that are still going through design, considering that's been completed. So obviously, all four of the main projects, design is done, construction's well underway. And then we also had the road work that's gonna happen out in front of the high school and junior high. There's raining being added and lighting. That happened this summer. That's been done and is complete. It has been bid out and ready to go. Couple of things that are currently on the street now being bid. Design is complete on the Salem Elementary renovations. Bids are due at the end of this week, so we'll get a firm price on that and get that racked up. We've got some bids already. It's looking good. And then we've also got furniture that just went is going out for bid this week. We've got two and a half weeks for the bid duration, so near towards the end of the month, early May, we'll kind of have an idea of when those final numbers come in as we order that furniture and get that all shipped out for when we turn over at the end of the summer. So that's sort of where we're designing. The other thing that's up there is the emergency responder system. So when we turn these buildings over, the fire department's gonna want to come in and make sure all the radios work. And we have had them out for some preliminary walks, and so far, it looks like we may not have to have that, which would be great. But until we actually get all the walls done and everything's complete, they aren't gonna sign off on anything until, you know, furniture's in and whatnot. So that's still kind of just holding a spot until we know for sure we don't need to do it.
Do we need to have a whole part figure on how much that would be?
It would depend on which jobs, but I mean, it could probably be at 200,000 to 300,000, it possibly be, if we had to do it at the early...
It's about a block a square foot, so it just depends on which buildings need it.
So we'll start over at the high school. So there's an area of that first area that's gonna be complete. That renovation, we're gonna get a little bit earlier than we're asked. We're looking for some time in May to turn over. That's the weight room, so we can get the weight room moved over and then start the interior renovation. So we had to get that one done a little bit earlier due to phasing and sequencing. So you can see the concrete floor. If you go inside, it's basically done other than the flooring. Everything else in there is complete. The ductwork's all done. It's painted. The logos are painted in there. It's looking really good. The windows are done, and so that's the furthest along of all the remaining additions. And that's kind of rocking and rolling, and we'll be... We probably will be done with that in about three weeks. But we've been saying that in May, just to give us a little bit of a cushion for that. So that's going really well. Then you can see, you gotta see inside there, the top left corner is inside that addition, and you can see the logo that was painted in, the stripe, the field turf's in, so we just have the flooring left to do. Then you've got the main addition that's sitting off to the side, the classroom addition with the learning stair. All the skylights are put in, all the end wall, M A P mechanical electrical is done. It's being drywalled now. The learning stairs are being installed now. So we're gonna... We'll have drywall finishing up here in the next two or three weeks, and then final paint doors. And millwork is actually showing up this week for that addition. So the high school, furthest along of all of them. We show furniture starting to come in early July for that one, and we're well on track for that, so no big issue right now. It's moving forward. Mason, you can see the bottom photo. He's probably about 75% done as he's wrapping his way. And then once he finishes that, that scaffold will be gone. Roof's 100%, and all that's done, so he's working his way through. Moving on to the junior high. Now, this is the biggest of the addition, what we call Area D and C. There's also the smaller addition up there, Area A, which is all dry and done. But I showed this one as the area. You can see again, the roof is complete. The masonry, yeah, and this one is about 75 to 80% complete. He's already started to pull scaffolding down, the bottom of the photo, down in that area. The scaffolds actually start to come down this week. The part that's in purple does not hit block, that is metal panel, and that's gonna be here in the next two to three weeks. So we'll start seeing that to tie all that back in together. We've started, again, the learning stair being installed over at the junior high. Skylights are installed and complete. If you were to block that on the first floor, all the drywall in that area is just about... Is boarded and being finished now, which I know many guys were out there a few weeks ago. It wasn't done yet, but that's moving forward. Painting is scheduled to get started here in the next couple of weeks. There's ceiling grid going in on all the first floor. We've got millwork showing up this week for the first floor of the junior high, and then at the end of the month for the second floor. So, man, targeted completion and starting the furniture early, mid-July, and then rolling through and getting that ready. I should've said on the high school, we do have some renovation inside there. We've completed about 60% of it already, and then we've got another 40% that happens this summer. So we'll be real busy inside. That's the admin area. We couldn't take that over until the end of summer, because obviously you need it. So we're working our way through that. And then the early, which is really... Since you guys are out there, is really starting to move. We had, I want to say we built 1.7 million dollars on that last month, so it was our biggest month. Permanent collar is now running in there. Lights are turned on. The gas line was run, which the school was able to help us expedite that and get it out there a month early by leading on their account to get that. We were supposed to be at May. We got it over spring break, so the gas line's done run. The brick is about 50% on that one. This whole backside is complete now. This area is about three weeks old. But they're working their way from what would be the bottom of that photo and kind of wrapping around up to the top and coming back, so we can start the courtyard and all of the site work on the outside rushing to get that complete. Windows started going in today on that one. Chillers have been delivered. All mechanical equipment's on site and installed. So if you were to go into the first floor of this building, you can see the ceiling grid is already installed and that whole academic wing. Millwork is been on site all week, so they're currently working through the first floor, getting that completed. The lights have been turned on on the first floor of the academic wing. And they're starting, they're doing their ceiling grid on the second floor now. I also shot a photo of just the brick that's going around that backside, just 'cause I think it looks really good. It's a good photo. They're making their way through, so you'll start seeing flooring here in a couple of weeks in that building, and then followed by the doors and hardware. This one's scheduled to finish in about a month after the others, so furniture starts coming in August. We'll get approval to start putting a furniture as we're working our way in in August before you guys move in.
Is that even ready?
Yeah, we're ready. I don't know if you're gonna post something. Actually, that one's really from... In the last six weeks, it's really took off, so it's starting to really hit movement. And once we get all the millwork and the ceiling grid, it starts to... It's flooring, paint, doors, so we're rolling our way through that right now. So any question on construction progress, anything else you want to know about before we talk about dollars and cents and all the fun stuff? Did I miss anything, Jeff or Christie, that...
No, thank you, Greg. Before you leave this evening...
What's that?
Before you leave this evening, I'll get my calendar out.
All right, so I've shown you guys this before. This is kind of current budget through the last change order that we've received. I don't want to delve too much into all the fine details of this sheet, but the last time we met, we said, "Hey, there's a variance." It was like 1.3 million dollars, which was gonna be funded from earned interest and whatnot. We talked, "Hey, we've got a lot of contingency. We're gonna do our best to hang on to all that." So all I'm gonna say in this meeting is we've done a great job as a team, between us, the district, and the designers, of hanging on to that contingency. We've got a lot of it left. So this shows what's currently left on both the owner construction contingency and the soft cost contingency. So between the two, you can see it's over 2.1 million dollars. They're towards the bottom of the screen. Can't see that. I can't see my cursor, but it's down in the soft cost. And then on our end, we're also projecting, we've got about a million left on our end that we don't think we're gonna spend all of. So that leads us to where do we stand today based on what we think we're gonna spend. So we're anticipating giving back about half a million dollars of what's in our current contract that we're not gonna need. So, and then between the soft cost and the earned interest, there's another 2.7 million difference. So it's all kind of comes together. We were 2,845,401 to pick up some other overages that we had. So we've got about 2.8 million dollars left to spend. We projected, and that's conservative. There could be some more later on, but where we're sitting here today, that's what we're comfortable saying that's left. We earmarked some money just in case, so there could be more later on down the road. But, you know, we kind of wanted to tier it and say, "Okay, can we make some decisions now based on where we stand?" And then if we get done with the jobs, there's still maybe a little bit left that can spend further on down the road. So, I'm gonna take a hard read on the screen. I don't know if you guys have your sheets. We met with Brian and Terry and Gene, and the design team came up with, "Okay, what do we think is critical to get moving and get approved now?" And the first thing that came up was, we're running about 600,000 short on furniture that we really probably needed as part of the project. Back when we were estimating and buying this job out, we cut the furniture budget back quite a bit in order to be safe and make sure we had enough money. And now that we're buying this furniture out, Christie and the team have kind of gone through the inventory of what's out there, and we're saying, "Really, to get where we need to be, we should use some of that leftover contingency money to get the furniture, make it whole again, and buy what we always kind of anticipated." So that was the first thing that was on the list, and it's really the most critical as far as timeliness to get moving forward, 'cause if we're buying that out now, and obviously commodities, all the costs are doing is going up, so if we wait, odds are it's gonna cost more further down the road. And then the next two both have to do with parking, so I don't know if you've noticed, probably. We've got a lot of tough parking lots out there, and the thought is, and some of them, you know, could be blacktop them, and what's the cost to do that? The schools are all short parking. The transportation yard is also on there, and the bus yard, which are currently gravel. But, you know, there's always thought, "How is there a way to get those blacktopped or hard paved?" So we've done some... I've already estimated, and I want that to cost and what it'll take to finally get those, you know, cleaned up and put all the surface on them. So that's items two and three, and Greg, interrupt me if you want. I want to work here with the other heroes. The fourth one was the auditorium, and honestly, Christie, you know more about that than I do. I know you guys want some... They look at some new seating and...
Yeah, it's a simple seat replacement and carpet replacement. This is probably a conservative number, but I wanted to be conservative, because we haven't literally had, you know, a theater manufacturer in there to really look at your seats and say, "This is exactly what we need to replace them with." So I don't think it would be as high as 250. We're probably closer to 200 to replace all the seats in there and the carpet. But once we know that we want to do that, then we'll move forward with engaging with the seating manufacturers to fine tune that budget.
And as you'll recall, we had a need to do that for some time. Part of this project also retrofitted and made an upgrade to the existing HVAC framework that is in the original 2000 high school, which the auditorium is a part of. And you know that we had some major airflow and humidity issues ongoing over the last several summers with that HVAC system and the chiller. As a part of this renovation and construction, we replaced that chiller and also added another chiller to be able to upgrade all of the HVAC in that building, so it would make sense at this point to go ahead and proceed with that renovation of that space. The... We've looked at the existing seats, and we had to replace some of the seat cushions because of our... The moisture damage that was done to them. And they don't make that seat anymore, and you can't get that style, so, you know, 20 years in, those seats are obsolete.
It's hard to believe to have spent 20 some years.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's a real important thing to be able to do for our performing arts, that that gets a lot of use. It's one of the most heavily used spaces in the school district.
So, and then if you kind of keep going on, item five, there's some issues with the current security cameras at the junior high. So there's cost to replace some of those and get those up and running the way that the school would like to see them.
Yeah, those are original to the building opening in '09. Since we opened that building, really, the camera, the security camera development intact has really lasted light years. There are many cameras in that building that are only functional one way or another as far as a lot more panning cameras, so if you have an incident or something on the security side that you want to look at, you gotta have the luck of the draw that maybe that camera hit that area while there was an event going on and didn't pan away from it. So the upgrades on this will also give us an improved security aspect and being able to remotely walk on, including law enforcement, on a web-based framework if there's an incident going on, to be able to what is actually happening.
Can I ask a question, and to backtrack a little bit to the auditorium with the seats and the carpeting, but is the lighting and the sound in that space 20 years old as well, or has it never been... Oh, we've replaced the soundboard and wing.
We have not replaced the soundboard, but the... Typically, theatrical equipment of that nature lasts forever, and it's built that way, and so all the lamps and lighting instruments that are in the air are the same ones we've had for 20 years, but professionally, I've used some that are 40, 50 years old.
So from a lighting and sound standpoint, the fact that the equipment in there is 20 years old really is inconsequential?
No, that is inconsequential. Eventually, we may need to replace the sound system, but that is simply just, you know, once it hits 25, 30 years old, we might have to look at that. But that is a relatively minor expense.
Thank you, Wayne.
So, kind of moving on, the last two are against parking lots, one being at the high school adjacent there to the tennis courts, and then there's another one over at the intermediate school. These are both, again, leftover. They're already stoned from our construction activities, so if you were ever going to pay them, now would be the cheapest time to do it, because you've already got a portion of it done. We would have to add some drainage, possibly. We're looking into that now, but still, you've got... It's clear, it's leveled, it's stone-based, so if you're gonna do it, now's the right time to paint it. So if you get all of those, it puts you at almost 1.4 million dollars. So like we said earlier, we're still... We're protecting, we get 2.8 million, so you're still leaving yourself a pretty good cushion for anything that you may or may not want to add to the list or that could pop up. So it's still fairly conservative. We did have one other item that wasn't on the immediate, kind of, but it was something that we've been looking into. Greg had asked us to get into that. So you guys have the old radio tower out at Salem Elementary that scares everyone to definitely look at it. So Greg asked me to kind of find out a number. It becomes a pretty involved deal to try to take that down. You need two separate cranes. It's fairly expensive, so that... It was 177,000 dollars, and that was not a marked-up number. That was a just true number from our subcontractor, so it would probably go up a little bit by the time you get over the hump and just figure out, but it's something that will eventually need to be done. I'm guessing it hinges partially on how long Salem's gonna sit there, but it definitely needs to come out. It sways pretty good, but it's something that we want to track and watch, so that's under as well.
And part of our challenge with that is our bus transportation antenna is at the top of that. It's up pretty good ways on that, so we have that as a part of our current communication system with all the bus radios. So we're looking at some other alternatives to be able to relocate and establish a different antenna location, and we're researching that, and as soon as we get that, those costs will come back to the board with a recommendation on this. It's either gonna come down now, or it's gonna come down when Salem comes offline and gets demolished in the next phase. But I think if we can go ahead and upgrade our radio system and antenna system to serve transportation in 99 square miles, it probably would be something we would want to look at doing now this summer.
Yeah, I wonder if you were to take that antenna down, it'd be nice to do it this summer before we top off all that paving and extend, 'cause you have an extension of that parking lot out there and some site work, and you'd hate to bring a bunch of cranes and drop them on top of new parking later on down the road. So if you were gonna do it, it'd be nice to knock it out now.
So on that particular light item, we're waiting on what a communications contingency would look like. And once we know we have a communication system for transportation that we can... That's gonna be workable for the whole school district, then we can look at removal of the tower.
Yeah, that's correct. We'd come back on that and go to the board and ask for approval on that. We're right now, Steve, we're just seeing... Of course, seeing approval on the first item that's listed there.
All right, so I guess I'll move it up to the board for any questions or discussion at this point.
This isn't an order of how... What you're proposing that you do, like this would be the first, second, or is it... It's not an construction order. It might be a priority.
It's a priority from your administrator.
Yeah, my only question was, my concern would be having something that's a true safety issue at the top, and maybe it's not, but is there a significant safety issue related to the security cameras not being up to date?
Well, we want them working, so we're gonna have to spend the money anyway, some, in some way, shape, or form, to make all the cameras operational, and if there are enough of them that there's an issue with, that would have to be done this summer anyway, so...
So we're gonna okay this new list, Greg?
Yes, I'm recommending the board approve these seven alternates and proceed forward, and I'm making that recommendation to the board.
Terry, from a financial and a, I guess, legal standpoint, what are the board's options with the 1.459? If, I mean, okay, so let's say the tower demo has to be added to that, so you have, you know, you've got 1.2 million dollars sitting there in the bond fund. What is the board's legal and financial options at that point, kind of, with those funds?
Yeah, legal options are obviously the bond and tax, or permanent reinsurance. That's why you can meet your... And you can flex out, anything like that, okay? So it's got to be a programing order. There's a timeframe that this spending's on, but we're fine with that timeframe. That goes up the law, it's overdue, actually. But, yeah, so is there like any program improvement type items?
Well, it has to be spent, right?
Yes, yes, it has to be spent. There's a time the IRS says, "Uh-uh, because it's accidental." But, yes, it has to be spent, but this has to be certain times. You can furnish different things, obviously, you can too, for destruction, which, as I said, it's just for that, but...
So if there were, let's say, a little over a million dollars in there, legally, would the board be able to make a debt being using that, or do we have to use it, I guess, as one of the...
We probably could pay back some debt. It probably wouldn't mean the debt's able to be honest a whole lot. I mean, probably barely, because it could be huge, and you're talking over like 37 years for bonds. So it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't make a whole lot of difference. If you can spend on something to be reimbursable from OFCC or something like it, you'd better to get the credit and then try to take that debt, which you can't. I believe that you can optionally research it more, but it would not make a huge difference, unfortunately.
Are there anything... I'm assuming the furniture is OFCC...
Yes, they will, yes.
Reimbursable, right?
Sorry to interrupt. If you guys wouldn't mind to pull the microphone in closest to you as possible and talk directly into the microphone. Point it towards you. Pull it all the way in.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So I guess, I know that the furniture is probably OFCC eligible. Is there anything else on the list that you would say is OFCC eligible? Obviously, probably parking lots and things are not, right?
Not if you already have a minimal OFCC required parking, so, which you probably do on all of those sites. So they would probably not hook on any of the parking alternates. They would not hook on the camera at the junior high, 'cause that's an existing building.
Auditorium?
They will not hook on any auditorium gear or work.
And obviously, if we decide to demo the radio tower, that's not...
Yeah, we're all...
So the furniture is the big ticket?
The furniture is the big one.
Is the big ticket? Okay. So you're getting a, whatever that percent, you're essentially getting a long-term 15 to 16% credit for the furniture purchase?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I'm pleased. Let's put it that way.
Well, that's good.
We're very happy to be able to have a meeting like this. I mean, the reality is with the current construction market, there aren't very many meetings like this happening right now. Normally, it's the opposite, so we're thrilled to be able to have dollars at the end of this project to be able to enhance even more.
So Christie, a quick question. The auditorium renovation, that estimate is based on your experience?
That's just taking a budget seat, you know, I know that a typical seat is about 300 bucks a seat, and then we know we need carpet, and we know there's having... We have the demo seats to be able to put seats back in. So that is... That number will change. That 250 will change.
I mean, it should be all of these replacements, right? Because we haven't bought any of it out, so that's part of why we're leaving the, you know, one point formulated at the bottom until we get these sort of behind. So they're gonna be close, but they're gonna move around a bit. Furniture will move around a bit. It's all gonna move around a bit till you procure it. We did our best, yes, based on what we knew today, but until we get it bought, all the flake commodities are moving around and things are changing. They'll overflow a little bit, so we didn't want to come to you and say, "Hey, we're gonna spend right to the dollar and then not be sure we have it," right? So that's why we're tiering it as we go. We're confident we can fit this in with room spare, and this was the top. and this was the top priorities to bring to you guys, so.
I can tell you, the security cameras at the junior high, that is a specific proposed cost. We've got that from one of our vendors that we're working with.
Okay, so these other estimates are based on your estimating process so far. They're pretty close. We understand they're going to change, but they're pretty good estimates.
Yes, they are. The only, the only wildcard right now that we're still investigating is with each of the parking alternates, we have to double, we have to check our couches because our storm detention was based on impervious surface for the current design. All of these add impervious surface. So our engineer has to go back, check their couches to see if we need to go and upsize any of our storm detention bases. There's three sites we're talking about. He's fairly confident that one won't need any. He's 50/50 on the other. He's pretty positive that we'll need to do a little increase on the third. So that will get layered on top of the parking.
Yeah, we did put some on here for drainage rework.
You did?
We did.
Okay.
Because we weren't sure, so we went through kind of the, what we built today. Said, okay, what kind of storm will have we been on the stuff we built today? And took our best guess. But do I know if it's going to be an ATX storm line 24, 36? Well, I don't know. So we just, we did the best we could. But we want to have something in there, so we do have some money in there. So if it's not too extreme, it shouldn't change.
Right, okay.
Okay. I'm going to jump back to something Diane said earlier, and just a point I want to add. It seems to me that the security camera issue probably should be above the paving costs in terms of priority.
Sure.
I know if you're looking at the entire list, and it could be covered by your, by your contingency bounds, then maybe it doesn't really matter, but...
Oh, yeah, we were, we were looking at having to do that anyway. And that might have come out of a permanent improvement fund cost as opposed to this. But we included in the list to save PI dollars for something else.
Yeah, so maybe just as a point of contention on my part, let's put it at the top of the list and say the security cameras are number one. But on top of that, is this actually enough? Is it just the cameras? Do we need to look at a broader security system upgrade across all our buildings?
We, I don't have Stephen here tonight to check our tech director, but we've upgraded and all of our new additions. We actually, like this building, has a camera framework that's exactly the same that we're going to put in at the junior high. High school, we've been replacing cameras that go down with the upgraded cameras as well, if those come offline. So that's, that's kind of a vision that we retrofit as, as we get to handle life on these cameras and upgrade with the web-based, embedded tech, security software framework to be able to, to look at things remotely and gain more control and vision on areas that need security.
So is this enough?
At this point, yes.
Okay, yes, all right. The number two item, the bus parking alternate, I don't know, is parking buses on gravel, is that not a good thing? Because that's an awful lot of money, just to park buses on pavement.
Yeah, we get some mess over there. Our bus fleet, I think, we're, are we at 70 buses now? Yes, sir. So when you look at 70 buses, basically, pretty much crammed in onto the blacktop area that we currently have, we haven't really been able to spread or space them out. Blacktop really is a preferable surface for vehicles like that to sit on. I know we get into some difficulty in the weather. I mean, we need to clear areas and lots, and we've got that gravel. We've got an ongoing expense there. We have to bring in gravel and dump and refurbish the gravel every year on that anyway. We've got, what, 60, 60 plus, 64, 65 bus drivers? And there's no, there's not enough parking over there. They're, they're parking all over on the grass and everywhere there. So the site is very congested. And there are a lot, there are a lot of people on it. Just from a safety standpoint, be able to more equitably space the buses out so they're not stacked and packed or tight. I, it's an overall safety improvement to the site as well.
Yeah, the paving for, the additional paving for students and staff, those are good things in my mind. But it just struck me that if it was just a preference that we don't want to park on gravel, that's a lot of money for that. But if we are talking about reduced expenses and gravel, wear and tear on the buses, Gene, I'm not a bus expert, but if we're saying that there's an issue there as well as safety, that makes a lot more sense to me. I didn't see that on there, so I'm with you with that. One last thing, and then I'll be quiet. Terry, I totally understand your point. Any money left over would be a very small, in the big picture, a very small contribution. But a million dollars is a lot of money to me, so let's keep that question, let's keep Tony's question on the table. We'll look into what we can do if there's anything left.
Okay.
I appreciate being on time and under budget, and I know everybody else does too on such a large, on such a large project. So I appreciate everybody's efforts in getting us to this point to have the need to have a meeting tonight and to have some options at the, at the end of the, of the project. So I know, I certainly speak for myself, but I appreciate it.
You good? All right, Mr. Gondal, roll call, please. I need a motion. Can I have a motion to approve a moving contingency list? Mr. Seaver, second?
Ah, second.
Mrs. Grace, roll call, please. Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. DeMiche?
Yes.
Ms. Horner?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, I have a recommendation for math curriculum revision and update for grade six through eight. And our assistant superintendent, Charlie Crickham, in construction, would like to provide the board with overture and updates for the curriculum.
I think you all already have the information on the passing out list, wanted to pass out again just in case. As you recall, a couple of years ago at the junior high, we participated in a pilot. We wanted to do more resources in the areas of language arts, social studies, and science. At that time, we did... At that time, we did not participate in a pilot because publishers at that time were updating their math products. And so our math teachers decided that it would be good to wait on the math pilot. So in waiting on the math, we decided that it would be a better opportunity for us to wait until this year and do a K8 math pilot then COVID hit. And then the K5 teachers decided this is not the year for them to pilot. Six, eight teachers decided this was still inappropriate and appropriate and they didn't pilot it. So our six, eight teachers piloted. I gave you the list of the piloting teachers there. If you remember, back in about '12, '13, we implemented or adopted a product called Go Math. And we've been utilizing that product throughout these years. Go Math is actually, will be no longer available after the '23, '24 school year. So we, we have to adopt new products in math, or we cannot use any of the product that we're currently using. Our products that we're purchasing these days are on a six-year cycle. What makes it a six-year cycle is it all has a digital component. And that digital component, we're getting a six-year deal on digital components. So the math, the junior high resources that we, that we purchased a couple of years ago, we have four years left on those after this year. Our pilot process, last spring, we brought in, I advertised to basically all the publishers that I could think of. They come in, they demonstrate their products to us. I have a committee there. From the demonstrated products, we picked three products that we believe fits the needs of Little Miami. I then go up to the teachers and I ask them to volunteer to be pilot teachers. By being a pilot teacher, they are agreeing to after-school meetings, they're agreeing to summer training, they're agreeing to basically do all of the needed items in order to make the decision of what it is that we want to do more of them. Little Miami has never had a problem. Our teachers are wonderful in this area. It's a lot of work, and I always get volunteers from, from all of our different teaching groups. One thing that I ensure is that we have inclusion classrooms, where we have students with special needs in them. We also make sure that we include students with, that have gifted identifications in our, in our classrooms. So this year, we, and always, we always do a student survey. We do a parent survey, and we use a rubric to guide the student process. So this year, we had 592 students who participated in the student survey. Now, when I say this, the student survey is pretty much, we ask a question and we raise our hands. So it's not a formal survey, just, just to, you know. It is very informal, but we do get a lot of good data from it. 66% of our students indicated that they were pilot, they participated in the pilot. 75 indicated the pilot resources were easy to use and navigate. 38% indicated the pilot resources thoroughly explained concepts. Now, that's a low number, but that tells us that we need our teachers. We do need our teachers, so I'm not concerned with 38% of them telling us that. 62% prefer to use the pilot resources over previously used math resources. 47% indicated they were more engaged in math this year due to the math resources. So those numbers fall, fall in line with previous surveys that we have done, those percentages. Students also shared some comments. These comments, I kind of put them into themes. I did not want to list the pages and pages of individual comments, so I kind of put them into themes. Some positives, MathXL, I'm sorry, let me go back. I am asking the board at the end of this to adopt the status, which is previously Pearson's Envision product. Part of Envision is a product called MathXL. So when I talk about MathXL, it's kind of grouped in with Envision. So MathXL, having, being part of Envision, I had a lot of comments, positive comments about MathXL being part of it. Having instant feedback, when you have a digital component, if a student misses a problem, there's a digital feedback that can give them hints, helps on how to, how to better understand the problem, and then it'll give them a new problem to solve with similar variables, but not the same. Absent students can keep up easier. Higher-level students appreciated the more rigorous content. Now, you know there's going to be a flip side to that, just so you know. But our higher-level students did appreciate the more rigorous content. Again, the teacher continues to be essential in student understanding of math concepts. That was indicated multiple times, that, that this does not replace a teacher. We're not looking to replace a teacher, so that's fine with us. It is a very organized product. They like the hints on what is confusing. They like to have the digital in print. That came across very clear over and over. And they have better examples, but some of the examples could be a little simpler explained. Some concerns, sometimes the wording is confusing. You'll also notice that some of these contradict one another. And I'm just indicating that I've seen both sides of that. Wording is sometimes too confusing. Too rigorous, so again, at the top, we had a positive that it was more rigorous, and now we've got a concern that it's too rigorous. Do not like that homework is done in isolation. It's Wi-Fi dependent. Input of answers is very selective. I will tell you, this is something of all of our digital products, we have the same concern, that it is very selective. So let's say the answer is one half. Now, that will indicate to write that in a decimal form. But there are some students that don't write it in a decimal form. They write one over two, and it's counted as incorrect. So those are pieces in the digital framework that, that are just kind of nuisance, to be honest, sometimes. Examples are sometimes confusing, and it's hard to tell when the lesson ends. I don't have more detail on that, but because it's a continual framework, I think that that's what we're talking about there. We also did a parent survey. I have the parent survey results listed as well. I prefer my student to use online resources, print resources, resources or both, online and print resources. 84.8% of our parents said that they want our students to use both print and online resources. I'm going to stick on there for just a second. Remember a few years ago when we first started our one-to-one initiative? The big concern that we had is that our students were graduating from college without the basic digital, graduated from high school, let's, let's go with that, without the basic digital skills that they needed. And so we really implemented that one-to-one to get technology in our students' hands so they could utilize digital platforms more frequently to just become more familiar with all of the areas. It doesn't mean that everybody wants to only use digital resources. They do want to use both print and digital. The resources were easy for my students to navigate, 89.4% agree with that. My student could complete assignments, homework independently, 84.8% agree with that. My student benefited from the instant feedback provided digitally, 93.9% agree with that. The resources provided clear instructions, 89.4% agree with that. My student enjoyed math this year over previous years, 71.2% agree with that. Again, that could be many factors, including the digital resources. I prefer the pilot, pilot resources over previous math resources used by Little Miami, 72.7 agree with that. Again, I felt like those were favorable for the adoption of Envision. The next section that I had is the pilot teacher discussion. Some positives that the teachers felt that the materials were organized and they need our state standards, that's a positive. It's more rigorous than Go Math. Of course, that's going to be looked at as a positive. And the concern, I put it into the positive area. They did specify that our students had quite a bit of struggle with, with the rigor of the product. If you recall back to Go Math, maybe I didn't share it at the time. But when we moved from our teacher-based materials to a published material with Go Math, we had lots of concerns with the rigor of Go Math. Today, we have zero concerns with the rigor of Go Math. As you work with that product for the system, it just becomes more aligned to our, to our previous grade level learning, and it just makes the next grade level a little easier. Teachers also indicated that this might be an odd year because of last spring, where students were not in school last spring and the morning lost there. There's lots of supplemental resources, and they indicated in that they must have the workbook, that students do prefer the workbook and digital resources. Some concerns, and in Envision, it starts with the hardest problem instead of working up to the hardest problem. So there's quite a bit of pre-teaching before that problem. Sometimes they feel that quizzes are too short and the tests are difficult to modify. They can be modified, it's just not as easy as they would like it to be. Students are not ready for the rigor, that's what they specified. Not sure if this is due to COVID or the product rigor. They're aligned to our standards, so that's still where we need to be regardless. We'll need supplemented, but a lot of that supplementation has already happened because of using, using it this year. So they've already began to supplement this product. Special education found it too difficult. We have found that before with products. I did talk to our special education director. She stated that we can't decide a general education product for only special education needs, and that we will supplement in special education where needed. 100% of the pilot teachers who attended the decision meeting, that was 11 out of 15, voted to implement Envision. So we also do a rubric. In the rubric, it basically goes through different categories. Our overall school score on the rubric was 76 point, I'm sorry, 76%. Identifying a sense of purpose was 82%. Building on student ideas of mathematics, 83%. Engaging students in mathematics, 71%. You can see the rest of those, I'll leave them each one. Anyway, our overall, overall rubric score was 76%. Again, there's not a product out there that's perfect, or there are only one product out there. So whatever product we use, we know that we have to supplement it. We know that we have to add our own Little Miami touch to it, which we do to all of our resources that we use. The price for a six-year implementation is $140,002, $240.49. Price per year, $23,373.42. Price per student per year is $16.50. The price includes teacher print resources, teacher online resources, student print workbooks, student online resources, and teacher training. Questions on the math pilot or the platform adoption?
Somebody said, kind of quick, you said that it was driven by the fact that Go Math is no longer available, or won't be soon?
It won't be available after the '23, '24 school year.
And then the last time that you adopted a new math curriculum was how long ago?
So 2012, '13, we adopted Go Math. Now, I will tell you, Diane, it kind of, we adopted it at those grade levels in the lower, and then we kind of continued to add. So we, we continued to move Go Math up to grade level, so it wasn't a full adoption K8, we started K4. We then, in 2015, we, that was, maybe 2016, they sent us their new products. So we just updated Go Math with some new products. But now that it is at its end of life, or soon to end of life, we are looking at piloting. We are looking at piloting K5. Now, this coming year, because of all those transitions within the following year, I'll be coming back and asking for a K5 math pilot.
And then do you know about districts with our similar demographics that are having success with this program?
Yeah, so Envision is actually adopted on our high school. And so it is our 912 math product. They were just updating the, the six, eight product or the middle school product when we did our, our last pilot. I think that that is hugely important because the sequencing, the terminology, I think that that is hugely important because the, the sequencing, the terminology, the framework of lessons is going to now be a consistent framework from grade six through eight, or six through 12. I think that's why GO-MAP was so successful to us because it was a framework of, the same framework from kindergarten through eighth grade will now have this running on six through eight. I can't guarantee it, or six through 12. Can't guarantee it will be K through, through 12, but it will be a pilot in our elementary to see if it's the right framework.
And then he said several times that it was too hard for students. There's no opportunity for differentiation?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's, there's lots of level products within, within the product. What we often find, Diane, is that sometimes they don't go low enough for our low students and they don't go high enough for some of our high students. So that differentiation in within the product is often within a range and we often need it in a larger range than it is. We'll have to, we'll have to provide that ourselves.
And that's where a good teacher does it.
That's what his interest is. Yeah, that's part of their role.
I just have one more question.
Sure, absolutely.
So I have seen programs coming out where it is highly just the student and the computer and they're essentially being taught at a computer, both home and at school. So what is the percentage of the teacher doing direct instruction and the kid just sitting at the computer?
This is all direct instruction. So the resources are on the computer, but the computer isn't teaching them. The, the teacher's teaching them. Actually, who goes to our teachers a few years back? We had a presenter come in and they said, teachers are going to love this. And our teachers were sitting in the room, teachers are going to love this. This product does it all for you. And I'll tell you what, after that, every teacher in the room shut down. They are not here to sit at their desk and watch the computer teach our students. They are here to teach our students. And so they do not want a product of that nature at all. So a product like this, it has videos within it, Diane, so there are, when they're at home and they are having trouble, they can watch a video and they can get further instruction on a piece. But our teachers are actually doing the teaching in the classroom, not the computer. They might be working on a problem, but to be honest, our math teachers want them to be working, maybe some digitally, but they want them to be working pencil paper. They want that pencil paper and math skill. And so that's why they're looking for the combo.
Great, thank you.
You are welcome. Other questions?
And as we grow and add more students, they charge you per, per student, so the, so the overall price could change a little bit as, as we continue to grow, right?
That's always the case. When I, we will do a six-year purchase and then every year that we go over that, they just charge us a different price. Add a different price. It's not the $16.50. So $16.50 is a six-year purchase price. So what you'll find is, is an individual purchase price might be 29. Okay? That's what it's been in GO-MAP, so that's why I use that as the example.
Regina, our graphic department has always been pretty strong. And with this program, I would assume that's going to continue that. I would not like to see us fall behind other school districts in this area. So are they also considering this?
Are other districts considering or are our teachers considering?
No, our districts, our competitors, our other school district.
Yeah, so Pearson or now Satus is probably one of the most widely used contents or publishers in, in the area. There's lots of schools right around here. So the big ones right now, Wayne, are, Mifflin-Harcourt, that's who published GO-MAP. McGraw-Hill and Satus are the three big publishers that, that most of the districts around this area are using products from one of their three. To be honest, we didn't find it with this pilot, but years back when we did a pilot, when we were piloting GO-MAP, another product that we were piloting at that time, we had a parent that had a concern. And so I looked at the other product that we were piloting on that particular content and the other publisher had the exact same numbers, the exact same illustration. Everything was the same on the page. The only difference, I was talking about a tint frame. On one, the tint frame was horizontal and the other, the tint frame was vertical. Everything else was identical. It was amazing how closely the products were aligned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's why we, we pilot, so that we can see, you know, what flaws are and what strengths are.
Yeah, to be honest, the piloting that we do is whenever I work with companies, they're always taken back a little bit that I want to pilot for a year. I don't think a lot of people do that. That doesn't bother me whether they do or not, we do. But we just got all our teacher resources for no charge because of the pilot for a year. They gave us all the pilots for no charge, so we only have about four to five teacher resources that we need to solve. So.
All right.
Thank you.
Regina, thank you. I appreciate all the data. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I really appreciate all the data. I, I love that. And I'm just curious, if you remember off the top of your head, how many parents responded to the survey?
Yeah, it, it was a low number. It was about 69 parents.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was afraid of, but I'm not surprised. The surveys are always a little.
Right.
If you don't have them in the classroom, you raise their hands.
Right, and that is, so the parent survey was, was light.
Yeah, okay, understood. So you mentioned that there's 11 of the 15 teachers said yes. Do we have any information on the other four? I don't want to leave them out.
Yeah, so.
If they're concerned or if they're interested or not.
I will tell you that two of the other four sent, they were special education teachers and they sent me their thoughts ahead of time and, and basically their thoughts were, this is difficult for my students, but I will use whatever we think in the general like, you know? And so I believe that that's why they didn't come, that they felt that this was more of a general education decision. The other two had other commitments and they said that they would go with what we would've decided.
Okay, so we're not...
I don't believe anybody feels that that was a decision.
All right, excellent. I'm sorry, the, the section I'll hear about the pilot teacher rubric?
Uh-huh.
I don't think I really understand what that's telling.
Yeah, so basically I have a rubric and... Sorry, I have that. That was a draw. I dropped, wasn't it? I pulled my draw. So basically I have a rubric that looks like this. And so a rubric is basically, we have a 3, 2, 1, 0 rubric. And so it indicates like under conveying lesson first purpose. The material conveys across teachers to convey the purpose of each activity or lessons to students. And so then, this is the combination rubric, but four of our teachers marked that as a, as a high, one of our teachers marked it as a medium. So I just went through and averaged, combined and then averaged all of their scores and then I just gave you the category at the top, not each individual box.
Okay, so this is the scoring basically?
It's just the scoring.
What are the teachers thought of this?
Yeah, appendage or indicators or pieces of it.
Okay, gotcha. And then, last question is on the, on the pricing, do they charge us by the year or by the student or how is that billed? Because I'm not sure if this was a test, but based on our projected number of students, the math didn't add up. And so I was wondering, are we saying $16.50 per student and then going up?
It is $16.50 per student and the, and the math right here is based upon the students right now. And so that price is going to go up. Much of that cost is, is paid through consumable or O09 account. And so as the students go up, it doesn't mean Little Miami's cost goes up because it's, it's a per student.
Right, okay.
On a consumable fee.
And are we, do we have that price locked in for the six years?
It is locked in for the six years, yes.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah. Anything over above is not. And that's what that 29 that was talking about, that is about approximately, so the other charges are any over.
Okay, that, thank you. That makes perfect sense. I thought you were testing me, I just wanted to...
No. No, no, no. I did.
All right. I think I did. All right, thank you, Regina.
You are welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for listening.
All right, at this point then, I need a motion to, to adopt the math curriculum as, as recommended. Mr. Seaver?
I'll second.
Ms. Horvath? Roll call please.